Your life.
Go Harvard.
Go ahead, okay. Good evening. I'm Barbara Omschutz, a member of the League of Women Voters of Central Delaware County. And on behalf of our voter services team, I would like to welcome you to our virtual candidate forum for Chester City Council. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan grassroots political organization. Neither supports nor opposes candidates or political parties at any level of government. The mission of the League of Women Voters is to empower and educate voters through a variety of voter engagement activities, including voter registration drives, get out the vote events, sharing of the League's online voter guide, Vote 411, and candidate forums. To conduct a nonpartisan forum, we collect questions from the audience to share what is important to the voters and to provide a broad range of different topics. This gives the candidates an opportunity to be part of an issue-based discussion in a virtual environment. The voters will be asked to nominate two of the four Democratic candidates to run in the November general election. It is important to remember that the primary voters will be electing the council members because no Republicans or independent candidates are running. The May 16th primary will be the election that really counts. The candidates, William Morgan, Elizabeth Williams, Tamika Gibson, and Fred Green, a League of Women Voters moderator, timer, and technology host, will be on Zoom. But the audience will be watching the forum using YouTube live streaming. The YouTube recording will be posted on our website, www.lwvcdc.org, and on our YouTube channel. We encourage sharing these links to the recording with others. No portion of this candidate forum video may be modified for use without prior written permission of the League of Women Voters. The video must be used or linked in its entirety. We want to thank the candidates and those that registered and submitted questions prior to the event. And now I will introduce our moderator, Jodeen Mayberry. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jodeen Mayberry, a member of the League of Women Voters and a retired journalist. I will be moderating the forum. Tonight, we ask you to listen and learn. All of the questions were received online via the registration form and from individuals in the community. All the questions have been submitted to the League prior to the live event and curated by the League of Women Voters to cover a variety of topics and issues without repetition. You may not hear your question asked in the same format you submitted it because we had to combine submissions on the same topics. There will be no additional questions from the audience during the candidate forum tonight. So each, so the rules of the game are this. Each candidate will have 90 seconds for opening and closing statements. Then we will ask the same question to three of the four candidates following a rotation that we agreed upon beforehand. Each candidate will have an opportunity to answer a question first three times, and each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer each question. Each candidate can make use of two additional opportunities throughout the hour to extend their responses by another 30 seconds or to respond to a question that they were not asked. They will just raise their hands to use their two opportunities. On the screen, you see me and the candidates for Chester City Council. To begin, we will ask the first question in this order. William Morgan, Elizabeth Williams, Tamika Gibson, and Fred Green. Our timer, Joanne Nealon, will be providing guidance to help keep all of the candidate responses within the timeframe. Thank you all for joining in this event. Please take time out to find out more about the candidates at the League's nonpartisan online voter's guide, Vote 411, and remember to vote. And I just want to add, it's really, this, this primary election is really important because the two of you who are selected to be the nominees in the primary election will be the winners in November, in the November election because no Republicans or independents are running for these seats. So this is the, this is the election that you need to get out and vote for your choices of two of these four people. Okay, so William, we'll start with you for the, for your opening statement.
Sure, and good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for allowing myself and all the candidates this platform to be able to speak and allow the voters listening to hear us as well. I am William Morgan, a lifelong resident of the city of Chester. And all my life, I've always wondered of how I can be a part of the solution to help anyone, any individual, young, old, black, and/or white. And I've been able to have that opportunity over the last six and a half years to serve at one of the highest positions here in the city of Chester as an elected official, as the councilperson over the Finance and Human Resources Department for the city of Chester. All for much of my lifetime, again, I mentioned, I just wanted to be able to help. And as I look at myself and my positioning and things that I stand for, integrity, honesty, solution-based decision-making, those are the principles that I live by and the principles that most certainly that I have been able to, to, to really have go into work over the last six and a half years. Some of the things that I've been a part of and been successful with over the six and a half years has been finding ways to decrease the city of Chester's expenses and liabilities, liabilities on an annual basis, which such as decreasing its, its healthcare costs. I've also been instrumental in certain economic development opportunities that has been happening here in the city of Chester. Most notably, the Philadelphia Union's Sports Complex that is on the horizon now. In a nutshell, what I'm speaking of is that everything that I do, I do is served for the city of Chester, for the residents, for the betterment of tomorrow, to see that we have a brighter future and see that we can increase and improve of the quality of living for all of our residents and the business owners here in the city of Chester. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, William. Elizabeth, your opening statement, please. Now, you must, you're muted. Elizabeth, you're muted.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for having this discussion with us today. I would like to tell my city the great things about Chester, Pennsylvania. Chester, Pennsylvania is the first city in Pennsylvania, the oldest city in Pennsylvania, the only city in Delaware County. And we are the fifth oldest city in the United States. And I am proud to say, and let anybody know, that I am from the city of Chester. I've been here all my life. I fought for freedom here, the rights to go to school. And I just love it. I love where I live at. It's, it's kept me and kept my, has helped me keep my family. And I just 100% work for my city and my residents.
Hi.
Thank you.
Tamika, your opening statement, please.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me and the other candidates here. I am Tamika Gibson, and I am running for Chester City Council because I believe that this city can be turned around. I was born and raised in the city of Chester. And at an early age, with my grandmother, I would attend marches to fight for people and advocate for people. I am here to advocate for the rights of the citizens of the city of Chester. I believe you have to not just lead, but serve the needs of the individuals that are in the city. And I am here to do just that, serve the community and bring positive solutions into a city that needs saving.
Okay, Fred?
Good evening, and thank you all so much for having me, and I look forward to this candidate forum. Many of you know me, my name is Fred Green. I'm currently the Vice President of Chesapeake Land School District and candidate for Chester City Council. I'm someone that has worked in this community for majority of my life. I started out, many of you know, my journey started out at the age of 11 as a community activist. Since then, I've worked for the Social Security Administration, the Department of Labor. I worked under Wilmington Mayor Dennis P. Williams and under Chester Mayor Kirkland and Linder. The work I've done and my experiences and roles that I currently hold have prepared me for this role, and I look forward to serving the city of Chester and doing what's right for our residents. We can move Chester forward, but I believe we have to do it together. And I'm someone that is going to foster relationships and build partnerships so that we all can come together and make Chester thrive again. One thing you can count on is me to be honest, open, and transparent. I believe we need to build our transparency back with our residents and restore hope in the community. And I'm here to restore hope and be the voice for the voiceless, a champion for our youth and a champion for our seniors that's going to help move this city forward. So on May 16th, I hope that you'll join me in making a difference in this community and helping Chester thrive once again. Vote Fred Green on May 16th.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We're just going to jump right into it because Chester is in a state of extreme crisis. A $24, $25 million a year deficit, budget deficit, state receivership, and bankruptcy. The receiver has won a court order to take over some departments, and he is threatening to disincorporate the city and dissolve city government altogether if its fiscal situation does not improve. How does, how do you, as an incumbent or candidate, plan to deal with these existential problems? And the question will go first to William and then to Elizabeth and then to Tamika. Go ahead.
So the way that we deal with those problems, first of all, is we have to talk and communicate amongst each other. We have to be transparent, we have to come up with great solutions and also be able to have a community involvement within those conversations as well to make sure that we're properly serving the residents and that they're here to understand what the plans or projects that we're laying out to try to combat some of those things that unfortunately that we're dealing with right now. You talked a little bit about bankruptcy and the disincorporation. And of course, those are things 100% that I am not supportive of when it comes to disincorporation. Understanding that bankruptcy is something that the city of Chester possibly needed to do as far as for leverages, leverage standpoint. But this incorporation, that is something that we cannot allow here in the city of Chester. And in order to, for that not to happen again, we have to deal with the partnerships. You have to go meet with your state representatives, your, your federal legislators to make sure that we have all hands on deck to remedy the problems that we have here in the city of Chester.
Okay, thank you. Elizabeth? You're muted. Elizabeth, muted.
Sorry. We, we have been working with the receiver. Ever since I came in, I was under Act 47, and we carried through the things that they asked us to do. The city has been in trouble for over 25 years before I even came to office. And we're constantly working and doing and asking what they have asked us to do. Under Act 47, we're doing what Act 47 is asking us to do. I don't know why they keep saying that we're not. But as the councilperson and working for parks and recreation, I have done that. I have sponsored sponsors to carry out a lot of programs that we have in the city. I do not use the city money in my, in my department. I have saved the city money. And I will keep on saving and doing what they are asking us to do.
Thank you, Elizabeth. It's time to stop. Tamika? What is your answer to this question? You're muted too.
I got it. Bottom line is that you have to be willing to work with the receiver. It's been six, maybe six to eight years that the current administration has had to remedy the situation, and they have not. If it was something that could be done, it would have been done. But the unwillingness to work with the receiver has caused the city to fall into the state that it's in. You need dependable leadership, full transparency. And once elected, I will fully work with the receiver and the plan that he has to move the city forward. There is no plan in place for success, and this corporation looks like something that could definitely happen. So the unwillingness has had us to kind of fall back, and we need to push and move forward. I'm going to work with those who want to do that.
Okay, all right. So the next question will go to Elizabeth first, then Tamika, then Fred. And it's kind of a follow-on question. As a councilperson, what specific steps would you take to put Chester City on a firmer financial footing and improve its fiscal management? I mean, this is the big question that we're all talking about is, is the financial hole that you're in. So I want to know, I think everybody wants to know, what specific solutions do you have to fix this mess? Elizabeth, you first. And you're muted. Elizabeth, muted, okay.
We already have plans. We have plans to bring companies into the city. We just did opening with the, with the union. We're, we're constantly out speaking to, inviting companies into the city. And like I said, like I said, we've been doing exactly what they asked us to do. So if there's anything wrong, it's under the leadership of Act 47. And maybe they need to listen to us too. It's a two-way street. We're, 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 we're working. They're trying to tell you that we're not working. We are working. We're saving money. We don't even have money to spend. We're not out there spending like Act 47 tries to say we are. They're bringing in, in people that's getting $100,000, $200,000 pay. The team is getting a million.
Your time is up. Thank you. Tamika?
Yes.
Your, your answer to the question about what specific financial solutions do you have in mind?
Okay, so the, the first thing I would do will be concerning business partnerships. They're important, but you have to include the different businesses that are in the area. And not only include them, but ask the constituents what they want, what they would like to see come in. Another area would be adequate housing, a tax rate, tax breaks for our seniors. There are so many different things that I would like to bring to the table. And I plan to incorporate anything that can generate wealth for the community.
Okay. Fred, your answer. You're muted. You're muted, Fred. You're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. And so my plan to help bring finances into the city. Well, first, we have to build up our economic development. We have to beautify our city so that way we can make the city of Chester attractive to new business owners and investors who want to come and invest in the city of Chester. We have to build up our workforce development. The bottom line is we don't have enough tax base here in the city of Chester to sustain our needs. And so we have to build up our, we have to build a stronger tax base. And we do that by building up our economic development and our workforce development. But not only that, we need to look at the, the current books that we have and make sure that each of our business owners are paying their fair share to the city of Chester, making sure that our residents are getting what they need and deserve from the current business owners that are here. And we also need to help with our first-time home buyers program and build more homeowners into the city of Chester so that we can create a better tax base.
Okay. All right, this next question will begin with Tamika, and then go to Fred, and then Will. And the question is, do you support or oppose the sale of the Chester Water Authority, one of the few assets the city can monetize, to help get it out of its financial hole, even if that may hurt city repairs?
I would have to say that I don't agree with the sale of the Chester Water Authority. I'll just use the example, if you have a house that you have and a room needs to be fixed, you don't sell the room, you, you find a solution to fix the room to save the whole house. And so we have to find a solution to save the city of Chester and not, not utilize first the Chester Water Authority. So no, I don't agree with the sale.
Okay. Fred?
So if we have a billion-dollar corporation such as the Chester Water Authority that we, the city of Chester currently owns, I believe that we need to look at that and see how that we can benefit in some way, shape, or form. The city is in desperate need of money. And if the Water Authority has money, I believe we, not, I don't believe in selling the Water Authority, but we need to look at and see how we can benefit from the Water Authority and that they can help the city of Chester in its financial distress. I believe monetization in the form of looking at the Water Authority and seeing how they can help the city of Chester in terms of financially. If, I know in prior years, they have donated and have worked with the city of Chester and gave us about $5 million a year. And we can look at reinstating that or seeing other ways that we can look at the Water Authority and they can help us financially. But I don't believe that we should sell our number-one asset in the city.
Okay. Will?
Thank you. So we should look to monetize the Water Authority. And we don't all need to just focus on the Water Authority. We also need to make sure and look into the core as well. When you think about the assets that you have and the worth of it, similar to like when you have your own home and you're trying to fix your roof or you're trying to fix other things within your home, you necessarily don't sell the home. At times, you might have to go to the bank and you have to say, hey, can I get a home equity line of credit? And you pull some of the value out of your home so you can fix up other areas within it and still be able to live in it. And that's some form similar with, I think that needs to happen with those types of authorities. They're worth millions and billions of dollars. And I believe if we can come up with an agreement, sit down with them to negotiate something, to have a lump sum payment to the city of Chester to help its current financial situation, but also have an ongoing annual type of contribution for the taxpayers in the city of Chester. I think that's a win-win because we're negotiating with our, our, our local authorities that also our residents support as well. And we're really able to pretty much put some of the fire out that we're having going on within the city of Chester's financial positioning. So monetization.
Okay, all right. So the next question, we'll start with Fred, and it'll go to Elizabeth and, I'm sorry, Brad, William, Elizabeth. And this is, this is the question about the Covanta trash incinerator. It's the largest incinerator in the country. It's right here in Chester, and it burns trash not only from Delaware County, but New York City, Ocean City, Maryland, and beyond, polluting the air that your residents here in Chester breathe. What can city council do to improve the air quality and health of city residents given the polluting industries along its waterfront?
I know oftentimes people talk about Covanta, but it's not just Covanta. It's a number of entities on the waterfront that are putting toxic emissions into, into the air. And so I believe that we need to look at all of those industries, and we need to do a study and make sure that they are following all the DEP guidelines. And we also need to hold them accountable if they're not. You know, I'm big on accountability. And so if they're not doing what they're supposed to do in terms of DEP guidelines, we need to hold them accountable. So I believe we need to do a study and make sure that they are doing what is right for our residents.
Okay. Will?
So similar to what you said towards the end of your question, Ms. Jodeen, across the waterfront, we not only need to focus on Covanta, we need to focus on all of those other industries across the waterfront, specifically the Kimberly-Clarks. You also have to look at what's happening in Marcus Hope, the import and exports and the things that we have that goes across the waterfront and across our highways and trailway and trails as well with CSX. All of those industries need to most certainly be held accountable for the toxics and pollutions that they put in our, in the city of Chester. Some of those things we may not be able to get away from the city or take out of the city. They may be here for some time to go, for some time, a long time coming. But with, what we need to do as elected officials is again, to make sure that we hold them accountable and responsible, not just meeting the bar of what the DEP says, but trying to find ways to exceed beyond that to have a better quality of living and to make sure that they're limiting the amount of toxins that they're putting into the air in the city of Chester.
Okay. Elizabeth?
We have the EPA that monitors that, and I'm really not allowed to talk about it because it's in the courts.
Covantos in the courts?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Something we didn't know. Okay, so the next question, let me see. The next question goes to William, Elizabeth, and Tamika. So do you support or oppose building an LNG terminal at the old Ford plant or anywhere along the Chester waterfront, and why?
Not very familiar with the LNG port or plan that maybe people are talking about that has been proposed. One thing I do know is we need to find ways to bring additional workforce here in the city of Chester and the workforce that I believe that is very fitting for our demographics here in the city of Chester. That is trades, that is industries such as financial literacy and banking, that is industries such as real estate, those types of things. And when it comes to the waterfront, as I mentioned, I said on the economic development, sorry, the economic development master plan for the waterfront, which consisted of Highland Avenue and North Street. And a part of that plan, we talked about sports and recreation. We talked about retail, we talked about restaurants, and really find a way so that people can safely travel to 291 in the waterfront and really just appreciate the great water that we have here in the city of Chester. So I believe that our waterfront, we need to find a way to bridge the gap between the Philadelphia Union and the area that they reside in, on the west of the Chester, and Harris Casino where it resides on the east of the Chester.
Elizabeth? The question was, do you support or oppose building an LNG terminal at the old Ford plant?
Well, I feel that the waterfront can bring us a lot of revenue because I was watching 60 Minutes, and they were talking about bringing back the old shipyards. And I'm fulfilled for what they have to do to bring revenue and to make our city go and grow. Our biggest problem is, is that we do not have enough revenue for the city to run on. And we need to bring businesses, open up opportunities for businesses to come here to the city of Chester. And lots of cities are back using their, their waterfront. So we really, really, really need to look into it to, to up our revenue.
Thanks. Now, Tamika?
I don't know enough information to, to give my opinion, but I would say that if the LNG pipeline is what we're talking about, I would think it would have.
It's actually, it would be a terminal.
Okay. So I would say that it would have to be monitored to make sure that no toxins or anything harmful comes into the community along those routes. And so, again, monitoring, finding out what methods are going to be used and then educating the community on what's actually going to take place before they do it.
Okay. All right, now the next question. Did I start with Elizabeth the last time, or William? I forget. You, okay. So the next question starts with Elizabeth. So we had some really good news about Chester in the last year and that gun violence and murder are way down while they're surging everywhere else. What strategies would you use to prevent gun violence and support trauma-informed care for victims and their families? This question will go to Elizabeth, and then Tamika, and then Fred. So Elizabeth?
We have worked, we have worked. We have worked, we have worked with our police force and we've got, we've have, we have uh less violence. Our 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 police and our young people are working together to help keep them out of trouble. We had a summit with the police and our young people. And we're keeping them, we we are keeping them very, very busy and keeping them out of the streets. We have several programs here in the city of Chester that's working quite well with the police. And our children are getting more involved in education and what they want to be when they grow up and not having to visit the police station that's going to take that opportunity away from them.
Tamika?
Um, gun violence is down because of community partnerships. The one thing I'd like to uh do is thank those who come out with the football programs for the kids, the boys and girls clubs, uh Generation of Destiny, uh which I am a director of, uh after school program keeps kids out of trouble, uh giving them different skill sets uh that they wouldn't necessarily get. Um, so community partnerships are very important, uh community involvement is very important. Once you include the community, they become a part of something uh that they can believe in and that is what keeps uh the gun violence down, the the involvement of the community.
Uh, Fred?
Okay, uh, c- can you repeat the question uh to make sure I'm understanding?
Right, right. Uh, what strategies would you use to prevent gun violence and support trauma informed care for victims and their families?
Um, so what I'll do is I'll continue to build on partnerships and I'll work with local uh county and state um officials to help bring uh different agencies here in the city of Chester uh that will hype uh that will help curb some of this violence. Um, also, we need to work with different uh institutions such as uh Crozier, um, different healthcare companies that we can help uh bring in trauma, um, inform people that will help our residents, um, people like Lisa Dennis and different organizations that help support uh families and victims uh who have been traumatized by the ongoing violence that has happened, um, not only locally but nationally as well. So I believe in bringing partnerships into the city of Chester uh that will help our youth, that will uh talk to our youth, mentor our youth and give them a better quality of life.
Alright, well, speaking of um the police, one of the um biggest contributors to the uh to the financial deficit is uh the police fun pension fund, which I believe uh I I believe it's been said that there's only enough money in the pension fund for another eight or nine months. So, um, I I wondered, A, if you have any ideas and and this will start with Tamika. Start with Tamika, Fred and William. So do you have any ideas about how to solve the pension fund problem? And or would you be in favor of disbanding Chester's Police Department and replacing it with a county department as Camden, New Jersey has done?
Well, I definitely would not disband the Chester Police Department. They have done a wonderful job uh in the community and we need that uh source of security um for the residents. The mismanagement of funds is what has us in the situation that we're in and no accountability. We would have money in those funds if four hundred thousand dollars of the money wasn't just taken away. You know, people need to be held accountable for those things and uh so that the citizens can know where the money is coming from and going to. And so mismanagement is what's caused that issue and we need to fix that.
Fred?
I am one hundred percent uh against disbanding the police department. I believe our police department is doing a great job in terms of bringing the violence down. Crime is down by sixty-two percent here in the city of Chester. And so that would be a no for me. Um, however, I do think we need to provide them with more support. Um, and also figure out ways that we can improve our pension fund. Uh, figure out ways that we can create revenue that will add to the pension fund. But disbanding the police department is a one hundred percent uh hard no for me. Uh, I think they've done a great job. Uh, like I said, our city is in desperate need of a stronger tax base. So that's what we have to look at. How do we bring in more tax revenue that will support the city and also support our police fund?
And uh William?
Disbanding the police department does not need to be an option. Um, our police department does, they do great work and they found ways to do more uh with less. So that should not be an option here. Uh, those in the current police department did not put themselves in a position uh for those that are fully not uh not aware or unintelligent about this current situation. The city has been in this position since nineteen ninety-five as an act forty-seven community. And actually, uh in twenty, right somewhere around tw- two thousand and nine to to two thousand and twelve, there were some um unfortunate things that happened with the pension board that changed the formula for the uh pensioners and which allow pensioners to spike pensions, spike their pensions via getting additional overtime. Uh, and and many of other things that unfortunately has been kicked down the road and has the city where it sits today. Uh, so this isn't something that happened overnight. This isn't something that happened in six years. This isn't something that hasn't happened under my watch. But what I do know is that we need to make sure that those individuals are held accountable for the things that they did ten, fifteen and twenty years ago. And then we also need to make sure that our ordinances are changed to uh to be corrected uh moving forward in the city of Chester.
Alright, uh, this next question will start with start with Fred? Yeah, start with Fred and then uh we'll go to uh William and Elizabeth. So let's talk about uh how you would govern if you were elected to uh city council. Uh, what would you do to increase the transparency and ethical practices in in Chester government? How will you engage the community and involve residents in making decisions about Chester's future? Fred, did I say we would start with Fred? Okay, go.
Um, so I am big on open um and being transparent and honest with our residents. Um, and you know, one of the things that I I will propose, I believe uh that we should be moving our city council meeting to evening meetings. Oftentimes, uh all of our meetings are at ten A M in the morning. Most of our residents are at work or in school and I believe we need to be having our meetings in the evening like other municipalities um in city do. So that way we can be transparent. That's a part of being transparent. Also, we have to meet the community where they are. Uh, we have to start going to our community. Oftentimes, we go to them during election time and then they don't see us no more. I believe we need to go to them uh all year long, providing them with information and things that's going on and that's happening in our community. Uh, and also, a lot of our residents aren't on Facebook, so we need to figure out how we can get the information to them and not just post it on Facebook. We need to be sending out uh, you know, monthly or bi-monthly uh newsletters updating our residents with information and events that has happened and that's coming up to happen soon.
Okay, nice. Thank you.
Ms. Jody, can you please repeat the question for me, please?
Oh, sure. Um, what would you do to uh increase transparency and ethical practices in Chester government and how would you engage the community and involve residents in making decisions about Chester's future?
Sure, so transparency is very important, but at times unfortunately, individuals put information out that might not be fully a hundred percent accurate. So we need to find ways to really bring the community in um and as far as inside city hall. And we also at city hall need to also find ways to go out there and meet the community, go to their community events in each ward and each neighborhood. Make sure they're uh that we are providing them with the resources and information, not just on uh not not just at council meeting, but via social media, but via uh mobile app, via the televisions and things like that. So really getting in front of the people, staying in front of people and staying consistent with that. So there are so many times that uh I I truly believe that there are individuals that are providing negative or inaccurate information to our community. And unfortunately, we need to be the people who are providing the truthfulness and honesty, the things that are really going on and how we all can be supportive and helpful for the things that they're trying to do.
Uh, and Elizabeth, I believe you have also.
Excuse me, Jody, I think Tamika wants to use a chip.
Oh, well, o- okay. Tamika use her her chip. Go ahead.
Can I go?
Yeah, go.
Oh, okay. I'd like to say we're, we we do that. We are, we have, we ha- we have the uh our station. I'm out there every, for me. I'm out there every day talking and working with with my with my residents and making sure that they know what's happening in city hall. Also, what I did was when COVID was in, I made had a office, put a office together for my residents to come and get funding for their rent and their utilities. And I opened up my office every Wednesday and hundreds by hundreds of of my residents came in and got uh money and for their rent and their utilities. And we talk and cry and did whatever we had to, I did. I'm gonna tell you, I did.
Okay.
Whatever I had to do to keep my citizens in their in their homes and in their apartments. Sixty-seven million dollars came through the city and the county.
Okay, very good. Tamika?
Yes, I'm hearing a lot about transparency and accountability and that is not what's what's been been going on. Most of the residents are ill-informed about anything that's going on in the city. And 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 even if it is, they don't understand it. And so it needs to be broken down into a language that they can understand. When I talk about full accountability, no one still knew about the four hundred thousand dollars that got taken and they still don't know what happened to it. So they need to be educated about that. And then when it comes to involving and including the the uh community, we need to do a better job at that because as I'm walking doors, they're saying, we don't hear from anybody. No one answers phones. No one cares about what we're going through and that needs to stop.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, um, so the next question, we'll start with uh William, Elizabeth and then Tamika. Right? Yeah, okay. What uh what is your vision for an effective open space plan that includes more recreational and conservation areas and parks for residents enjoyment? What types of grant opportunities are available currently? And I I would just like to add, uh, wh- what would you do with the the Sean Park, if anything? The question is about open space grants and the Sean Park. Uh, William, you start.
So let me make, so is the question, what will we do with opens? You know, it looks like I'm frozen.
Yeah, you are.
Alright, so is the question, what will we do with open space grants and DeShawn Park?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Basically, talk about open space in Chester.
I mean, I'm a person that loves nature. I'm a person that is, I think is important for families to get out together as a family and be able to walk a trail, to be able to uh look at the trees and and understand about the science and the nature. So I'm very supportive of that. Uh, we've currently, uh and I've been a part of this as well, uh working on uh East Coast Greenways, uh those trails that's going to go through the city of Chester, uh working on the trails that has been hap- that has happened recently at uh Arrow Park as well and also the trail on uh the Chester waterfront. As I even mentioned about the uh economic uh development plan for the waterfront, we we put trails in there to talk about nature and also a bike trail uh along the two ninety-one route. Uh, when it comes to DeShawn Park, it has been set long and dormant for too many years. And we as a uh as a community, along with Delaware County, who ho- who holds some stake in that land as well, need to come together and and be able to really see what is a be- the best fitting plan for that. And currently, there is a R P out uh for developers to come back with proposals as well.
Okay, alright, thank you. Elizabeth, and you're muted.
I'm 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 in, I'm in um charge of the parks. And we have a plan. We then had a plan since twenty sixteen that runs to twenty eighteen. I'm I'm always on the computer looking for grants. My grants I have come in, right now I have over three million dollars in the pipeline for grants. Companies that come here, I let them know that they have to contribute to our parks, our playgrounds and recreation. We, we, we did I have um eight playgrounds that I have restructured which were designed by this this the children that live in the area. And um we work hard to keep our parks and our recreation to clean and kept up. Now, as far as the Sean, DeShawn Park is owned by Delaware County. They have been asked several times to put condominiums, stores in that area. And for some reason, the county keeps denying us.
Okay, your time is up. Sorry. Tamika?
Yes, uh, I am out of the community on a everyday basis and I don't get any kind of government uh grants to do anything. The community comes uh together and we fund whatever's necessary for the community as far as the children's recreation. Um, on any given Sunday, you can find us near the DeShawn Park feeding the homeless. And uh, that would be an awesome area in DeShawn Park because that is where some of them congregate. Uh, as far as the building, uh, the museum part on DeShawn Park, I would turn that into a senior recreation place where they can come and and art can be displayed there or um family gatherings can be there. That's my favorite part. I grew up uh right down the street from there and my grandmother would take us there and we had an awesome time and those awesome times can happen again.
Alright, um, let's see, the next question. And this will start with Elizabeth, go to Tamika and Fred. What should city council do to recruit businesses to Chester and how can it help existing businesses thrive?
Well, we're, we're, we have our economic development and they're constantly out recruiting different companies to come into the city. So, um, where we, we are, we we're open. You know, we're, anyone that wants to put a business in Chester, they're welcome to come. Mister Mister Morgan is on that committee and that's what they do.
Tamika?
I will look into the Keystone Opportunities Zone to see what kind of economic development um incentives we could bring to the city that way. Uh, currently, when businesses come in, they get a ten-year uh tax break. And so I would look to to shorten that um and also involve uh our seniors and be able to get some of those uh incentives so that their properties are not um having leans and things like that put placed upon them. Bringing businesses in are great. But uh stabilizing our seniors are of great importance as well. So I will look into the uh read uh read about revi- revitalizing our area through the Keystone Opportunities Zone.
And Fred?
And so uh again, I would look to partnerships and look for um companies to come in uh to the city of Chester. And I'd again, work with people on the county and state level so that we can get in recruit uh attract businesses. And so the city of Chester, we have to continue working with our uh law enforcement agencies and also our our city to make sure that our city is beautified and that our violence is down to make the city attractive to business owners. A lot of times, business owners don't want to come to a city that's riddled uh with violence and uh a city that's riddled with trash. And so we really have to uh make sure that we're keeping our city beautiful and we are uh continuing to bring the violence down. And also, we have to support our uh local businesses and also our black-owned businesses. I believe uh if we want our businesses to thrive in the city, we have to support them so that they have longevity here. And we also have to be able to give them more uh resources and grants or whatever they need to sustain in the city. We have a number of businesses downtown and we need to make sure that we are We have a number of businesses downtown, and we need to make sure that we are supporting our downtown businesses uh, and our business all throughout the city on a daily basis.
Okay. All right, uh, so the next question, we'll start with uh, Tamika. And then go to Fred, and then um. And then William. Um, what role should City Council play in helping Chester schools recover and help students thrive and go on to higher education?
I honestly believe that they should bring trades back. Everyone doesn't go to college. Uh, when I was growing up, we had a culinary arts, we had a wood shop. Uh, bring back some of those things uh, to high school students. Um, it'll give the younger people something to look forward to, and they can grasp and hold on and feel comfortable about moving forward. It's good to educate, but it's also good to bring in trades that can be beneficial to them as they become uh, responsible uh, adults.
Okay. Fred?
Um, and so we have to continue to support the Chessupland School District. I'm supporting them tomorrow. I'll be in Harrisburg, um, standing on the front lines fighting for fair funding. If we want our children to be educated properly, uh, we have to make sure that we have adequate funding to support our school district. And so I'll be standing on the front lines tomorrow in Harrisburg for Advocacy Day. Uh, making sure that Chester Upland School District can get its fair funding that our children need and deserve. Uh, also, it's gonna take a number of parents and community stakeholders to help uplift our school district. We need our parents to be more involved, come to our school board meetings, and support their children in the district. Uh, we also need, you know, more community stakeholders. I just secured a grant uh, for our children to go to Belize. So our children will be traveling abroad abroad, and I secured a grant from Harris Casino that is going to help them in their uh, expenditures. And so again, we just have to rely on community partners and also our parents to help uh, make sure that our kids get a good quality education. Just like the children out in Swafmore, out of Media, Springfield, and every other district. We have to stand up for our kids and continue to fight for the children of Chessupland School District.
Okay, and Will.
Sure, just gi- giving our kids the same opportunities and exposures that the other kids are seeing in other school districts. And I mean by that, by making sure, looking looking at the demographics of the city of Chester. I believe that we should, our our students should be being uh, taught some of the things that is uh, where the workforce is very much situated here in the city of Chester. So that is trades, that is financial literacy, that is sports management as well. We talk about the Philadelphia Union. Like, we need to uh, find ways to direct their education to some of those big corporations and businesses here in the city of Chester as well. And then when I also look at, look at um. Uh, the the opportunities that we have uh, with the uh, with the Philadelphia Union. Uh, some of the things that I've been a part of, as I mentioned, the Philadelphia Union, not only are we uh, ha- will have a of sportsplex here in the city of Chester. But someone like myself who advocates for good education and advocates to make sure that our kids have their proper exposure like they have in these other more affluent neighborhoods. Make sure that the Chester High School and other uh, schools within the district will have access to the sporting complex for practices and for games and things like that. Because we know that our kids like nice things as well. But those are the types of things that we need to look into and speak to the kids and speak to the parents and bring them in and make sure make sure that their voices are being heard.
Um. Joanna, I just wanted to ask uh, how we're doing on time. I have a couple more questions, or we could go to um, the closing statements.
We've got, we've got time if we if we want to go longer.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, yeah. Do you have four questions?
Well, I have two more, but I could I could come up with some.
Okay, do four.
All right, um, so uh, what specific plans will you implement to increase job creation for adults and youth? Uh, and this starts with uh, Tamika, Fred, William, I think. I guess that's where we are. So go ahead.
Education is key, and so there are many people that may not have um, their high school diplomas or uh, a GED. And so there are programs that need to be initiated uh, for the benefit of those individuals that don't have it. I know that we have the uh, the learning, the reading literacy program, and that's great, but there needs to be uh, there needs to be other programs implemented so that people can thrive. And so I believe that if we educate our residents, that it will pu- that will put them in a better position to be able to take care of their families and themselves. So I just would say to educate uh, the community as much as possible.
Okay.
So again, when we talk about workforce development, and we talk about the number of businesses uh, that is here and have been coming into the city. We have to make sure and ensure that our Chester residents are getting these jobs. Oftentimes, businesses come into the city, and we're uh, our residents are not getting the fair share of jobs that they deserve. And so we really have to work uh, closely with these business owners and these institutions that are coming into the city. And make sure that they have a number of jobs set for our Chester residents and make sure that they get a job. We also need to work on partnerships uh, with different agencies and different companies to ensure that they can provide some of our residents with uh, not only jobs, but also job training. And we have to, again, uh, look at trade schools and look at different trainings uh, where we can educate and we can make sure that our chil- our children. Uh, especially our high school students are uh, qualified and equipped to work these jobs that will be coming to the city of Chester. And so again, let's work with partnerships uh, to bring more jobs to the city and uh, create more economic development and more workforce development.
Okay, and uh, Will?
Ms. Jody, can you repeat the question, please?
Sure, um. Uh, what specific plans would you implement to increase job creation for adults and youth?
Almost certainly. So uh, partnerships, working with our neighboring agencies such as EBSI, uh, Croger Library. Uh, those en- entities that will help with job training, that will help with resume building. And then also directly talking to those businesses and corporations, not just the ones that are here, but the ones that are coming in the future, so that we can get ahead of the curve. Uh, making sure that uh, those individuals who are looking to get those job opportunities are fully trained ahead of time, and they know how to speak to these individuals, and they know exactly what they're looking for. Uh, when it comes to the youth, I've I've mentioned it before, but uh, oftentimes, it's unfortunate, but we have in the past have set our children up for right now success. And we need to set them up for a long term success. So I don't like talking about jobs when we're talking about our youth. I like talking about career opportunities. So when we bring in these businesses and these corporations, we need to not be just talking about the janitorial job. We need also to be talking about the executive and supervisor and managerial jobs as well, because our kids deserve those type of opportunities.
Right. Right, uh, we got at least two questions about um. Um, about the trash service in Chester. Uh, so I'm not familiar with it. Do you have a problem with with trash, and what would you do to improve it? And we'll start with Fred, go to William and Elizabeth.
Um, so there is a major issue uh, in the city of Chester in terms of trash. Um, as you see, oftentimes, people have used Chester as a dumping site. Um, people come from outside of the city, and they dump bulk trash all throughout our city. And so we really need to work with our community partners, and hopefully our residents will be reporting these people. And when they see people uh, dumping trash, get their tag number, try to get a picture of them and report it to our authorities so that they can be fined. And so that we can try to stop some of this dumping in the city. Uh, we also need to work with our um, trash company, uh, whatever company that picks up our trash, they need to do a better job. Oftentimes, they pick up the trash, have the trash fall out of the dumpster, uh, out of the trash can before mixing to the truck, and they leave it there. They don't pick it up. And so we really need to work with the companies uh, that are picking our trash up and hold them accountable for the trash that they're leaving in our city. Um, and again, I will work with our residents and uh, whoever is over top of our um, you know, department that handles the trash company. So that we, that way we can hold our trash company accountable and make sure that they are picking up the trash like they should.
Okay, all right, William.
Ms. Jody, is the question, what will we do to address the trash issues in Chester?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll tell you exactly what I'll do, and I'm actually working on it right now. Uh, what we need to do is we need to, or one of the options, there are things that we need to do, is come up with a plan and a solution to find ways to remove or de- uh, reduce the amount of trash that we see on our sidewalks. And one of the things that we have in plan is to make sure that each resident has a trash can, and not just a trash can, a sizable trash can and one with a lid as well. And we need to unify the unify the block uh, the neighborhoods with those types of trash cans throughout the city. Additional to that, we need to make sure that we enforce the codes that we have on a book. Dark codes are, there are such codes on a book such as when you should put your trash out and when you should put your trash back. So those things in tandem with the Public Works Department that oversees the trash, uh, and those things in tandem with the uh, code enforcement and licensing inspection. Who handles uh, the enforcement of the code that we have on the books. Uh, those are the types of things that we need to have a stronger enforcement on inconsistency with to clean up the cu- the the trash here and and to better the quality of living uh, for all of the residents and businesses as well.
Okay. Elizabeth?
When I'm, when I, when I'm out driving and riding around the city, and I see the trash, I get really upset. It's mighty funny. How trash from Norwood. And different areas, Ridley Park. Way, way, way. Cities that's not down here near us. So you know what I do? I go and get my gloves out the car and go in the trash. And get their name, and then I don't care whose name or number. I find in that trash, you're gonna get a call, and I'm gonna make sure you get a fine. Cause all this trash, somebody's just dumping down here to be smart. And to make Chester look bad. But they don't do it out in their neighborhood. There's no way in the world I should be opening up a bag and Norwood, Glen Olin. Trash is down here in Chester, and Philadelphia can keep their trash, too.
Okay. All right. Um, so.
Excuse me, Jo- Jody, uh, Tamika wants to use a chip.
Okay, Tamika.
Yes, I hear a lot about the plans that are supposed to be coming forward, but you have six to eight years to put a plan in place. And now because it's election season, I hear what we're planning to do, what we put, the plan has failed. We need a whole new administration to come forth to to implement better plans to change the uh, situation that Chester is in. The plans that you've already had don't work. They haven't worked. It's time to get rid of the old and put something new in place so that we can move forward properly.
Okay.
Ms. Jody, to rebut that, do you have to raise your hand?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, just raise my hand.
Yeah, go ahead. You're using one of your, uh, Tamika's used both of hers now. You're using one of yours.
Sure, so.
And I invite the rest of you to to use your chips, too.
Okay, so again, uh, what I would say is that when you have uneducated or ill informed individuals that speaking on things and don't know what they're talking about, this is what happens to our community. When you talk about an individual that has saved the city five point five billion dollars a year, oh, we have the data to put in the finances to prove those types of things, most certainly. We talk about an individual who has set in negotiations that helped to negotiate negotiate contracts with uh, police, fire, Teamsters Union, most certainly, those are the things. But additionally, some things that we all know, you need funding to do things. Sometimes it's grant funding, and sometimes you can do that with general funds. So what did we just receive? The city of Chester just received thirty plus million dollars through the American Rescue Plan Funds, and guess what? Those are funds that are going to be used for the community. We have an oversight committee with the committee, with the community involved, and those, that's how we're going to be able to use those funds. So I apologize for those individuals who don't know or not fully aware of how the city runs and how we can be able to provide resources to our community.
Okay, all right. Um, does anybody else want to use a a chip right now? Because, you know, we're almost to the end of the program, and a couple of you haven't used them at all. Go ahead, Elizabeth. Go ahead.
Every, we we have plans. We have the plans that Act forty seven. Gave us when we came in the door. And we've been following what they have asked us to do. Under Act forty seven. Under Act forty seven. Now, what I need you to do is vote thirty three. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Jody, I got a question. How many questions do you have left?
I have, I have one que- I have one question left, and then we'll go to uh, closing.
Uh, thank you.
Okay, so um, this is a question about uh, transportation. Uh, how do you feel about the transportation options currently available in Chester? And uh, if uh, if uh, they're not adequate, what would you do to increase those? Uh, and, okay, uh, we should start with Fred. I'm I've completely lost track of, who did we start with the last time? Do you remember, anybody? Okay, uh, we'll start with, I I will start with Elizabeth then.
Okay.
Okay, talk about transportation.
Transportation in Chester is the best. We have more than thirty thousand people come through our city in a year's time. Thirty one, thirty one hundred come through on a week to week basis. So our our our, we're we're good. Our transportation is good. You can come, you can come to Chester and go anywhere that you want to go to. Two hours, two hours to New York, two hours to Washington DC, on the train, on the bus, and on the plane. So Chester is number one when it comes to traveling. And. Going different places. I will give us that.
Okay, all right. Tamika, want to talk about transportation?
I don't currently see an issue with transportation in the city of Chester. I do uh, would like to point out the awesome program, the key program for the seniors that is so beneficial to them. They're able to get on transportation that otherwise um, they would have to pay for, and a lot of them can't afford to pay for uh, transportation. So the Key Card Program has been a plus for them, so the transportation is a is is good in the city of Chester.
Okay, Fred?
Um, you know, the, I think that they both said it best, the transportation here. Um, you have roadway, highway, waterway, and trainway um, here in the city of Chester. And I think the the uh, the Key Card Program is a great program. Um, you know, I would increase that program. They'll try to, you know, meet the seniors where they are. If we could go to the senior homes and to the senior center and make sure that every senior in the city has a key card. And they they have adequate uh, transportation uh, to get to and from where they need to get to uh, throughout the city. Um, so I think the the transportation here is great, and I will continue to work on and keep building that relationship with SEPTA. Uh, to continue the transportation uh, in our city.
Okay, all right. Well, you guys have been great, uh, giving us a lot of, a lot of information. And uh, so now uh, we'll go to the closing uh, statements, and I'm gonna reverse the order. I'm gonna start with Fred. We'll go to Tamika, Elizabeth, and then William. So Fred, you want to give us your ninety seconds of um. Closing?
So again, uh, my name is Fred Green, as you all know, and one thing you can count on, uh, I'll be open, honest, and transparent with the residents. And if you see my track record, you know that I get up every day and work hard on behalf of the residents of Chester. My plan is to try to make the city of Chester residents uh, have a better quality of life. And I want to do that by creating recreational opportunities, more senior services, and working with partnerships to increase our economic development and our workforce development. But I cannot do it alone. I need your help, and I believe we can move this city forward together. So on May sixteenth, I'm asking for your support and your vote. Vote for a candidate that you know is dedicated. I've been working hard and on the front lines of this community since the age of eleven. I'm thirty. I'm almost twenty years in. So that shows you, I'm dedicated, I'm committed, and I'm passionate about my community. And I hope that you'll join me in this quest to make the city of Chester better. So um, and again, I'm willing, I'm ready, and I'm qualified to be your next councilman. So on May sixteenth, vote Fred Green for City Council.
Right. Tamika?
Yes, so see here, here's the thing. Open, honest, and transparent is what I am, is who I am. The issues that Chester has been faced with is due to dysfunctional leadership. I'm fully functional, my spirit and body. I'm engaging with each and every one of the constituents of the city of Chester, and I have been. Not not just now, but before the pandemic and and even before that. If Chester wants new leadership, if they want to go in a new direction, you have to start over with something new and fresh. And I'm new and fresh, full of ideas, willing to engage with the residents of the city of Chester to move uh, forward to so much better. No more games, no more lies, uh, no- nothing else hitting. Full honesty and transparency. You can count on me to tell you the truth at all times with nothing held, nothing held. So on May. So on May sixteenth, I'm asking for your support if you want to see cities, the city strive the way that it used to be. It can, it can happen again, but it, it's gonna have to include you. So will you stand with me, march with me to a better Chester? Thank you in advance for your support. I am Tamika Gibson and I approve this message.
Okay, Elizabeth?
To say good evening and thank the um, women's voters. I have have done as much as I can and will keep on doing for the city of Chester. I helped bring in sixty-seven million dollars for the city and the county for my residents to stay in their homes. I'm about the need. You need a place to live, you need something to eat, and the baby need diapers. And I'm here to do that for my citizens in the city of Chester and will always love my city. Thank you and good evening. Don't forget to pull thirty-three.
William?
So when you get somebody like me, you get somebody that's honest, transparent, straightforward and is willing to fight for you. Not someone that's going to hear something and then say it in a meeting like the Koz's which have been expired for years. Not someone who hasn't been here and hasn't lived here for many of years and it just has moved back here and think that they can do better. No, the city is in a great place. The city is in an upward bounding and upward moving place. And it's because of the great work that someone like myself has been doing. Speaking with our business owners that look like us and that want to, that's from this community and want to build within this community. Speaking to our youth that want to be a part of this community, want to live in this community and want to do things like recreation and trades in this community. And speaking with our seniors who also have come to me to say, hey, transportation is great, but the transportation center is not in the city of Chester, Chester is not open past three o'clock in the eat, in the uh, three PM. So we need to find a way to get that open to, to a later time. So those are the things that has come to me and those are the things that I'm fighting for, for all walks of life here in the city of Chester. As I mentioned previously, I'm ten toes down in this city. I'm the one that's built to lead and run this city in the best capable hands and make sure that we have a strong future. And I'm not talking about a future for five years, I'm talking about a future for ten, fifteen and twenty years down the line so that babies could be able to grow up here, live here and stay here. You know, uh, so I'm just happy to be here. I'm happy to have been able to speak to you all. And again, vote Will Morgan on May sixteenth for the culture, for our culture, and it's the best way to lead. Thank you.
Okay, well, I just want to thank the uh, the four candidates very much for coming out and participating in this tonight. And remind all of the viewers that the May sixteenth election is the election. The, the two people that you vote for on May sixteenth will be elected in the general election in November. Uh, so this is the, for Chester, for people Chester, this is the big one. Um, and uh, good luck to you all. I don't know, do we have uh, was a, a, anybody from the league want to say anything else in closing?
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, alright, well, thank you all. And good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
So wow, was it, you was great. You were awesome. You were awesome. And you talked nice and slow, because all that fast talking is a bunch of fucking malarkey. You see what I'm saying? I like the way you talk real nice and slow and you just, you know what I mean?